Today is by Ms. Julie Beard and her guest is Ms. Billy Taylor, President of Greater Madison Park Neighborhood Association. And the, uh, you guys, I see you already here, okay? And Mr. Cameron Moore will be doing, leading us in our pledge allegiance. If you can just come on to the mic. Thank you.
Come on Cameron.
Let us bow. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with an humble heart and with a spirit of gratefulness. Father, as we gather in this place today, we pray that our hearts and our minds will come in agreement with the spirit of love and unity. Father, we ask that you will continue to wrap your loving arms around the city of Montgomery, around Alabama, and the United States of America, as well as the families whose lives have been shaken by the recent tragedy. Give them comfort and peace during this time. We ask now, oh God, that you will bless this meeting, that you will lead and guide every person that serves in a leadership position within the city of Montgomery. And lastly, Heavenly Father, your word says in 2 Chronicles 7 and 14, "If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven; I will forgive their sin and heal their land." Father, we ask that you heal this land. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Please join Cameron Moore in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cameron. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. You want to? Uh, Ms. Taylor and Cameron, you will come back up for a photo. Thanks again. I need approval for the September 16, 2025 work session minutes.
Motion approved.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, need approval for September 16, 2025 regular council meeting minutes?
Motion approved.
Y'all singing together. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, need approval for the September 30, regular council meeting minutes?
Motion approved.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay, before the mayor's message, I need to inform the council that I have received an email to inform me that there's a municipal judge position that's open in the city of Montgomery, and I think we'll be taking applications from the 10th through the 14th?
19th.
10th through the 19th. So if you have any, need to be sent to the clerk's office. If you have anybody that knows someone to apply, please do so. Thank you. At this time, Mary?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President, thank you, uh, all the members of the city council for being here today. Uh, good to see, uh, so many members of the community, uh, here that are both with us, uh, in person and those that are, um, participating virtually. Um, I want to start by, uh, discussing what happened this weekend. Uh, with a devastating tragedy was unfurled in downtown entertainment district claiming, uh, two lives and injuring, uh, 12 others. As we've said, uh, since that night, this was an act of, uh, selfish and senseless violence, uh, in our hearts and with those, now prayer is more important, uh, with those victims, uh, and their families. Uh, Montgomery Police Department was working with local and state law enforcement partners, uh, knows, uh, to bring those responsible, uh, to justice. Uh, we are grateful for all the community support, um, and tips that we have received. Uh, but we're not going to be defined by, um, the act of a few people, uh, or a handful of people. Um, when you have thousands of people in your city, that's great. That's what, uh, has assisted us to have the largest budget in our city's history. Uh, seeing the tourism and seeing people come and discover all the great things about our city, not just downtown, but throughout our community, many venturing out many miles beyond, uh, even our city borders. So we're proud of that, and we're not going to change our approach, uh, to what we do as relates to bringing in entertainment and bringing in options, uh, for people, uh, throughout this city. Uh, we're going to make sure that, uh, when people come in or people live here, they're safe and they feel safe, and that we make those, uh, adjustments to enhance, uh, everything that we need to do. But in order to do that, we've got to make sure that we're acknowledging some of the challenges, um, to reduce juvenile crime, uh, especially during late night hours. Uh, the council previously created an ordinance to implement a curfew, uh, in downtown Montgomery, uh, and by restricting the movement of minors during specific times, uh, we can help prevent them from becoming victims of or participants in criminal activity. This measure will focus on age, hours, enforcement, and parental accountability, especially in high-traffic areas like our entertainment districts. We're also conducting an audit of our surveillance cameras to ensure that they are not only functional, but that they can be enhanced, uh, more than with facial recognition technology to better identify, um, where and who, most importantly, are some of the bad actors. I want to encourage all citizens and business owners to register their surveillance cameras with Montgomery Police Department's, uh, Star Watch program. Uh, many of you already have, and many of you have been very helpful, uh, since late Saturday night, early Sunday morning in assisting us, uh, in this investigation, and we're grateful for that. But this will also help our officers respond more effectively during other emergencies, uh, and investigations. Together with the support of the city council and our community, we will close the gaps and leave too many people vulnerable so that we can build a safer Montgomery for all. And while we confront these challenges head-on, we also look ahead with hope and momentum. Now, as we confront the challenges facing Montgomery, we must also invest in long-term solutions that address the root causes of instability, economic inequality, lack of opportunity, and disconnection from community resources. That's why the Urban League's expansion into Montgomery is a significant and timely development. It will bring proven programs to our city that will strengthen access to workforce development, housing support, education, small business assistance, health resources, and community empowerment. For more than 50 years, the Urban League has worked across Alabama to advance equity and improve quality of life. In 2024, it served almost 10,000 Alabamians through housing counseling, financial stability programs, youth mentorship, and health services. This is not just a programmatic expansion, it's a strategic investment in the people of Montgomery. It aligns with our broader efforts to reduce crime, strengthen families, grow our economy, and make sure we bring opportunity to each and every zip code in our city. That will make us a more resilient and equitable community across the board. And it also reflects our commitment to partnerships that deliver real measurable outcomes for our residents. But even as we invest in long-term solutions, we must also confront immediate threats to our community's well-being, none more urgent than the crisis facing Jackson Hospital. It's a cornerstone of care for Montgomery and the surrounding counties, and we know that it's under severe financial strain. We have had several meetings with executives from Jackson Hospital, as well as county and state leaders and those in the business community about its future. Its potential closure would not only jeopardize access to critical medical services for those residents of Montgomery, but for those throughout the River Region and beyond. It would also stabilize broader healthcare infrastructure in those surrounding counties. That's not something that we can afford, and that's not something, uh, that we want to see happen. But I want to be very clear, Montgomery cannot and will not serve as a sole financial safety net for institutions that serve a regional population. We will not bail out private businesses and organizations because they have bad management. We're going to have to think about, from our perspective, how do we balance the needs of the city and our responsibility as the regional economic capital with those entities that are needed for everybody? Jackson Hospital serves several counties in the River Region, and since this is the case, other bodies of government must join to help stabilize and sustain this hospital. While we fully recognize the essential role Jackson plays, the city will act and must act with fiscal responsibility. That's how we have gotten to the best financial position that the city has been in well over 30 years. There are a lot of businesses, very, very important to this city, very, very important to this region. We cannot bail all of them out. They have to be held accountable, their management has to be held accountable, their board of directors has to be held accountable. And so we can't compromise our financial future without clear accountability, enforceable commitments, and a shared investment from all stakeholders. I do not believe the city should back the hospital with any money without a firm written commitment from the state of Alabama, Montgomery County, and other regional partners. We have to make sure that we aren't going to be left holding the bag. So this moment also underscores a deeper issue. Montgomery lacks the revenue tools that most of our peer cities in this state rely on to fund essential services. Chief among them is an occupational tax. Without such a tool, our ability to respond to emergencies like Jackson Hospital's financial crisis is severely limited. We are initiating conversations with regional partners, state leaders, and we will continue to meet with our city council leadership and all the members of our city council to discuss our perspective and our position. Big point here is we need enforceable agreements. We need to understand what the terms of engagement will be. We need transparency, and we need the state to step up, not just with words, but with resources and policy tools that empower cities to act. We know that in some communities, there are dedicated revenue streams for healthcare. We don't have one of those revenue streams. We know in some cities, they're covered by other taxes that go into the city's general fund. We don't have that. We are handcuffed and hamstrung to be able to do things that many of us would like to see done. And so in order for us to adjust to where healthcare is in this city and in this region and this state, we're going to have to make sure that everybody comes to the table with a clear conscience and with a clear goal and objective of what they're willing to put in and not just take away. And so before any public funds are committed, I want the city council to make sure they ask the following questions, among several others. How will we keep the hospital accountable? What will those rules be of management and oversight be going forward? How are we going to decide which private organizations are eligible for support? Will we do the same for Baptist Hospital? Can we justify haphazardly writing a check and hoping that the investors and hoping that partners will do what they say they will? We've got a lot more questions to ask than we have answers at this time. We are well aware of what has happened in the past, and we are well aware of what we're faced with right now in this current moment. But for all of us, we have to think beyond just where we are right now, and more importantly, where we're going to be and who and how we will get there together. Healthcare access is a shared responsibility, whether that's in recent legislation that has been passed at the federal level that restricts funding for healthcare that impacts benefits, uh, reimbursement that will impact many of us as a city employee, what we pay moving forward. We have to make sure we're asking the questions, and we have to make sure we have the answer that we need to go back to the residents of Montgomery. And so while we're looking forward to coming up with a great solution that works for the residents of Montgomery, we're going to need everyone to come to the table to make sure that they have the same type of commitment, the same level of energy that we have, not just today in terms of a crisis, but in terms of how we move forward to make sure this hospital stays on solid ground in the future, long after any of us are in our current positions that we now hold. If we fail to act together, city, county, and state, we risk losing more than a hospital. We risk the health and stability of our entire region. But that includes everybody, acting transparently, acting with the best interest of each and every person that we're attempting to serve, and that's not just the city of Montgomery. That's everybody that's impacted by healthcare and this hospital and where it stands right now. Mr. President, I thank you for the opportunity. That concludes my message for the night.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Anyone have any questions for the mayor?
Mr. Calhoun.
Mr. Prude.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment on that hospital deal. I thought, had a conversation with the chamber, and I agree with you that the River Region does need to come to the table. And I would like to challenge the chamber to, let's make that, let's make this meeting happen with these surrounding counties. You know, we should not, it was interesting, the information that Jackson Hospital gave us. If you guys remember, how many patients they had come from Prattville, how many they had come from Millbrook, Greenville, every other place, and also how many individuals worked in those surrounding counties that came to our town to work. So Mayor, I think you're exactly right. I think we need to challenge the chamber to make that happen, make sure everybody understands these surrounding counties, who wants to help and who doesn't. Because it, this, like you said, this ain't just our issue on this. This is, this is a River Region, this is, this is a big, this is a big issue for a lot of people.
All right, anyone else? Thank you. All right, at this time, uh, we have a special guest, uh, in the audience, Congressman Samaria Figgers. Uh, do you leave? If you want to greet the council, if you want to have anything you want to say, you can do so at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the mayor, to the council, and most importantly, to the constituents of Montgomery. Uh, thank you. Thank you for having me here. Um, I'm supposed to be in Washington DC right now, uh, but we are, we are in the midst of a shutdown. Uh, a shutdown that obviously we'd much rather not be in, and a shutdown that will have real impacts on real people if we can't figure out how to get to a solution in Washington. Uh, but I'm fortunate to be here this week, uh, because the last, uh, week or so, you know, since I've been back home from Washington, uh, Montgomery's been at the top of, the top of the list in terms of things to respond to. First and foremost, it was the hospital, uh, last week. As I got off a plane, our, my staff started blowing my phone up with an article that said Jackson Hospital will be closing in 30 days. And I said, that cannot be true. And we've been following Jackson Hospital, uh, and the financial status of the hospital, and we knew it was dire, but we had never heard that before. And so I landed on the plane, put my kids to sleep, and got in the car and drove up here to have meetings last week about the status of Jackson Hospital, and was happy to hear that 30 days was not the right number. And I was fortunate, uh, to be able to be assured that Jackson Hospital is not closing, uh, in 30 days, and that the city and the county and the state and, and private stakeholders are working diligently, diligently to find a long-term solution for stability. Uh, and that is something that we are supporting at the federal level as well in terms of trying to seek out those solutions, in terms of what it may look like. One of the biggest disappointments I had in going to Congress, knowing the healthcare status of this state and of this district, was that there is no federal money available in such emergencies like this. And I associate myself with the comments of the mayor in terms of the importance of Jackson Hospital. And I'll even take it a step further. From what I've seen since I've been in Congress, from the conversations that I've had with people in the healthcare industry, hospitals, doctors, healthcare practitioners, Jackson Hospital is the single most important hospital in the state of Alabama because of the regional care it provides. And its situation is a collective problem, which I agree requires a collective solution. And we are all obligated as elected officials to take leadership and seeking that solution. So I applaud the efforts and the diligence of the council, and the mayor, and all of those who are working to find that solution, and we will continue to be part of that solution-seeking process as well, and you have that commitment from myself and from my office. Secondly, um, I cannot speak here tonight and not address, uh, the shooting that happened over the weekend. It is something that is, you know, for people who have been affected by gun violence or been near to gun violence, uh, it is something that, that it, it can never sit well with you. Uh, it is scary, it is not a good situation to be in, but I can tell you this, is that, that too is a collective problem that requires a collective solution, inclusive of people in Congress, people in the State House, you guys, county government, the mayor, the business community, the clergy community, most importantly, parents. But when home is not working, we have to stand in and fill the void of public safety. It's not an easy job. It's not an easy job to do. But we, that's inclusive of me, we have to figure it out. I've lost friends to gun violence. I have a brother that has been shot. My mother's house has been shot at. This is something that impacts real people in real ways, and we can figure it out. We can. But we have a role as elected officials to make sure that we are encouraging the conditions that not only produce the visible aspects of public safety, i.e. more police presence on the streets, but we got to get to the root causes. Because the fact of the matter is, is I, I don't know the perpetrators of this weekend, but here's one thing I can guarantee you, that the decision to pick up a gun and be willing to use it was made years before Saturday night. Our policies have to reflect that reality at a federal level, a state level, and a local level. We can have all the officers on the street that we want. There were officers within seconds of this. Officer presence was not the cause of what happened Saturday night. But we, as elected officials, have an obligation to protect everyone in this audience, all of their children, all of my children, and I will be leading the charge when I get back to DC to make sure that if more funding for presence of officers on the streets is what we want, well, we're going to make people put their money where their mouth is. I come from a Department of Justice background. I believe in supporting effective and fair policing, as does the average person in this country. But we got to be serious about it. We have to be serious about promoting the funding, delivering the funding, encouraging those law enforcement careers, so our neighborhoods can be policed by people who we can identify with, who can identify with us. We have to be serious about funding public education. We have to be serious about making sure that permitless carry laws do not become the law of the land because it creates the types of conditions that we saw on full display Saturday night. And so I stand in full support with you guys and want to work with you guys as much as we can from a federal standpoint to provide the resources to seek out and find and fund the actual solutions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any special committee to report?
Mr. President.
Ms. Johnson.
Um, I, I want to start with, uh, and I'll be speaking from the Commerce and Industry Committee. Uh, we had an STR meeting, um, it'll be canceled, and I'll send out a notice for a rescheduled date. Uh, before you cancel, I have placed two ordinances. Uh, with Ms. Blaylock, uh, if you don't mind, just reading the heading of the two.
Ordinance establishing curfew regulations. The second one is ordinance prohibiting wearing a ski mask or similar face coverages in public places with the city of Montgomery subject to specific exceptions.
Uh, this will be an extension of a citywide curfew. It'll go in committee, Mr. President. I'd like to place it in the Commerce and Industry Committee, meeting on October 17th at 10:00 a.m. Um, and I just want to, uh, to the families and the friends of those who were impacted over the weekend, I want you to know that we're mourning with you. Um, and I know there's no words to fill the void of this loss that you've had. Um, and I know we all may feel really exhausted right now, I know we're grieving, but I want you all to know that we are alongside you with law enforcement, emergency responders, and city leadership, and we are working tirelessly to get the answers that you need and you deserve to protect our residents and support those affected. Uh, I am committed to transparency and will continue to share updates throughout my social media and my platforms as they become available to assist with the city pushout, uh, rollout of, uh, updates. Uh, if the community has any information, I ask that you all rely only on verified city and law enforcement sources to avoid any of the confusion that is already going on during this difficult time. The Office of Violence Prevention did a really awesome job. I want to salute you all with your response with trauma support to the victims over the weekend and to the families and even those that are affected. Uh, we're giving grief counseling and already making placements throughout the city for that and the community vigil. Uh, River Region United Way did make an announcement, um, to support the families. Uh, but what I wanted to do is, although I, um, placed these two ordinances in committee for us all to come to the table and discuss for a citywide, I want to also, um, push out initiative I briefly mentioned to the mayor, um, and I'm asking for full support. Um, we dubbed it Renew MGM, Stronger Together. It's a city-led movement to unite Montgomery, restore safety, and rebuild confidence downtown through visible action, from more patrols to improving the lightning around the businesses to support them, justice advocacy, and community engagement. This initiative aims to make safety something every resident can see and feel because this is something that together as Montgomery is, will stand for unity, accountability mostly, and renewal, providing once again that we are stronger together as Montgomery is. We'll have some pillars on this, is making safety visible. When I say that, I mean, when we have patrols out in downtown, and these are some things that, uh, we have been discussing already through departments, um, with chief and with the chamber and local businesses in downtown, on ensuring that patrols are visible. We're bringing back out the scooters, they're walking again. There is an implementation of barricades that will possibly go out downtown if we were to keep the entertainment district after the meeting with the business owners on this upcoming meeting that we may have, um, if we decide to move forward with that. There'll be some things that we'll already have working that I'm committed to putting funding towards, and I ask that the council assist me in that if that is needed through those departments. To support the businesses, right now, Main Street, Montgomery is doing an amazing job, and I ask that we continue to support them, and Office of Violence Prevention are working very hard to provide those supports and let the businesses and their employees know that their support is out there for them. And we'll do campaigns to help push customers back downtown. I know that everyone feels unsafe, but downtown isn't unsafe, the city isn't unsafe. It's as mentioned, those are root issues that I know I've been working extremely hard in District 3 to address. From even upcoming on October 18th, we'll have expungement clinics, we'll have laws there from Faulkner Law, uh, coming, 10 of them are coming, and to the community at Chisholm Community Center to assist with wills, expungements. Community Center to assist with wheels, exclamation if that's needed, anything else legally that our community needs. Flatline churches offering free legal clinics every two, every third Tuesday at their church. But these are the things that we are working on, and I know it's been a tireless effort, and we've been doing it, and I know there's proof, and we're waiting on the numbers to come out. Because we will show the numbers of the decline in crime in District 3 because we improved and opened back up and restored our community centers. Boys and Girls Club, every year we've increased their budget and our contribution from the city. We've worked together with them in partnerships and even to the programming within our community centers. So there is work happening. We are addressing the root issue. There's a larger thing where the community needs to look for the resources that are available. We are giving them to the community, but the community needs to grab a hold of them and actually use them. So I appreciate this call, Mr. President. Um, I'm gonna give the floor. We have some more things that will roll out to this, and I'll be speaking with the mayor more and his cabinet on how we can push this out as a collective and really build on this. And I ask for the community, I have a suggestion box on my site, on the City of Montgomery's website, please send me any suggestions that you may have and ideas that you have to work for, and we can do this as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. President, I have one thing to add, please.
Ms. Riley?
Um, we, um, we're talking about rebranding MGM, but we need to rebrand city, our entire city, not just downtown. So let's be collaborative, united, the MGM for the entire city, 'cause 1 through 9 districts matter. Everybody in here, life in every district matters in our city. Also, I wanna emphasize that we do have a Office of Violence Prevention Crisis Hotline. The number is open. If you need the number, please utilize the number, and I will give you the number at this time, but it's also placed on the website. The number is area code 334-625-4000. That's 334-625-4000, and that is our direct crisis hotline number to the Office of Violence Prevention. So let's unify our whole city. Every district matters on unity.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. I'd like to recognize, uh, Commissioner Justice Stansbury. He's in the audience, appreciate your leadership and support, sir. Thank you. All right.
Mr. President, I have one last thing. Um, I, I heard Mr. Blunt, uh, Mr. Mayor, you weren't here yet, but he stated that he was cleaning the blood off his walls at Ravello, and I know we have a contract with Block by Block, so I'll ask that we have Block by Block go back through and clean that, 'cause it should've been done immediately after anyway.
Yeah, we had, we had teams that were out there within hours. Uh, they may have missed his, his, um, particular business, but they cleaned the sidewalk, they cleaned a lot of places, so they may, they may have missed that some way, but those, um, that team was out there, and kudos to them for being out, uh, and everybody on, on the, uh, staff for making sure that that was done as quickly as it could be.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Madam, what?
Mr. President, items 1 through 26 are your consent agenda items for your approval.
Need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item 27, hearing of proposed ordinance rezoning 1245 East South Boulevard from an O1 district to a B2Q district.
All right, Representative for item 27, please come forward. You item 27? Yes, sir, please come forward. All right, your name for the record, sir?
Uh, Derry West.
Did you get that, Ms. Blalock?
No, sir.
Speaking to the microphone.
Uh, Derry West.
Thank you.
All right. Any question for Mr. West? What, what are you planning on doing, uh?
Uh, my purchase is building back in May, and, uh, me and my, uh, girlfriend, we're gonna do a childcare center. Uh, but we also wanna do, uh, uh, help with the elders and stuff like that as well, so that, that's kind of along the line. We're gonna, we're looking for...
Okay. Any other questions for the, uh, all right, take a motion?
It's a public hearing, Mr. President.
Oh, okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward.
I got, I, I got one question, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, you're looking at what I'm... It'd be restricted.
He'll be, he'll be restricted.
Yeah, you, you'd be restricted on it.
To childcare center.
Yeah. You have a Q, a B2Q.
Yeah, that was one of the things I, I, I wanted to talk about. Uh, I'm okay with restrictions, I don't wanna be restricted to just that. I don't wanna do any, I'm fine with no liquor stores, no clubs, anything like that. So we, if you wanna put those restrictions on there, just kinda still open it up commercial.
So is he just the owner of the...
So you, you, you gonna lease the building to someone?
Well, I, I, I bought it, I'm, I'm an investor, I'm starting to do business. I'm out of Atlanta, and I'm doing business. I'm trying to do business in, uh, Montgomery, so I've got a couple properties that, uh, but I, I wanna go into the lines of, uh, helping the elderly, childcare center, and stuff like that, that nature, so, so I'm, you know, but I just, I wanna kinda keep it open. I don't want any liquor stores or any, uh, nightclub. I'm, I'm fine with those restrictions.
Okay. Any other question? All right, need a motion?
Mr. President, I got a quick question. So this here, it's got a qua, it's got a Q on it for a childcare center.
It does, and it's restricted to childcare.
Right. But I'm, my question was gonna be is, is that, does he need to go back to the Planning Commission to get a recommendation about whether or not that Q can be lifted? Warren?
No, we can make that decision.
So what did the Planning Commission say?
The Planning Commission recommended the rezone, but it's still a B2Q.
Go ahead, Mr. Warren. Mr. Warren? Did you hear a question from Mr. West?
No, can you repeat it, please?
Sorry, I was just at, the, the recommendation came, if he wants to have the, the Q taken off of this to be used for other purposes, does it need to go back to Planning Commission to review?
Planning Commission is only a recommendation, you have the final say. However, please be aware that a B2 would allow uses like gas stations and other things as well, so if you open it up just to a B2, that obviously allows a lot more potential uses, including filling stations, driving eating places, motels. So I believe the Q was put on there because the intent from the applicant was to use it as a daycare.
Yeah, and originally, we purchased it with the idea of, uh, doing a daycare, uh, childcare center. But, uh, the space for the playground and that, that, things of that nature may kinda prohibit us with how many children we can have, and, and my, my girl has been, she deal more with that, that, that part of it, but, so, uh, we thought, 'cause I, I bought it, and I'm, and I'm gonna do the business out of there, so I'm not leasing it to anyone to do any, any business.
Okay, Mr. President, I got a quick question. So you said you was, you live here in Montgomery, you said you live in Atlanta, and you...
I, I, I live in Atlanta.
So you're gonna do the business out of there, and you're living in Atlanta?
Yes, no, but we're, we're actually looking at, uh, properties here to build, uh, home here in, uh, in, uh, Montgomery. So that's kinda, sort of, so, and I've been looking at properties here, and I purchased that one back in May, and it's another one at 901 I was looking to purchase as well, so.
Mr. President, um...
Ms. Johnson?
Andrew, uh, Counselor Samansky, uh, especially that you already put in a, you put in an application, and you went forward to the Planning Commission like you had a plan already.
Well, we did.
And you don't anymore, though?
So when, when, I, I didn't know the, the, the procedures, so I, I, when I called down to the zoning, uh, commission, that, that's kind of what was our idea. Now, we cool with childcare centers, because I think childcare and elderly care kinda falls into...
Yeah, uh, one, you just carry this over so they can figure out what they, what they wanna do? So if you, if you queue it, and if we vote on this, and they don't even wanna really do it?
The, the, what's before is is Q, and it's restricted to a childcare center. So if we vote on it tonight, it's gonna be restricted to a childcare center.
And that's all you gonna have?
That's all you gonna have, that's what's before, that's what's been recommended by the Planning Commission, so if it's gonna be anything else, it needs to go back before the Planning Commission and be discussed.
Well, like I said, we, 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 we're fine with what you, you're saying, uh, with the approving it for a childcare center.
Okay.
I just found out that, like I said, that, uh, elderly care and all that kinda find, falls in the same deal, so when I spoke with Ms. Ingraham, she was, like, when I come to...
It doesn't, it doesn't, you may wanna clarify that.
One more time, one more time. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
You, you may wanna clarify that, because it doesn't.
Warren?
May, Mr. Calhoun?
Well, let me get it.
You can amend it.
Well, I guess, adult, daycare.
Just amend it to senior care center.
Well...
So you wanna restrict it to childcare and senior care facility, Andrew?
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody make the amendment for, I'm fine with it, so just make the amendment on the, uh, I can't make it, it's your own issue.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You want me to amend, amend the ordinance to add an additional Q for elderly care?
You need to make a motion to adopt first, then a motion to amend.
Motion to adopt.
Okay.
Now, a motion.
Now, a motion to amend.
Okay.
To add...
Elderly care.
Elderly care. Childcare and elderly care, okay?
All right. All right, we have a motion to...
On...
On the floor?
On the amendment.
On the amendment. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Uh, Ms. Riley?
Yeah.
Your yes? Unanimous.
All right, now we're going on the main motion, need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, the ordinance is adopted as amended.
We love you to bid, yourself. All right, thank you.
Item 28, hearing on proposed ordinance amending Appendix 6, uh, to Section 4, certificate of occupancy required.
All right. All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come CNN, advocate public health, has been hailed as problematic for the council. Hey, Mr. Tate, is this the, uh, come, come to me?
Hello?
Is this the thing that we talked about, the change to occupancy that come through your department?
Yes, the temporary...
Temporary.
Uh, occupancy that we talked about.
All right, need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Uh, motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, sir.
Item 29, application for a towing company doing businesses back down in emergency roadside in recovery.
All right, Representative Mr. Crystal Karski, Karski? Have a representative for the towing company, item 29, down in emergency roadside. Ms. Mitch?
Mr. Calhoun, I mean, Mr. President, since he's not here, I'd like to table this indefinitely.
Okay. Table it indefinitely.
Yes, sir.
Item 30, review of all-out towing at 3783 Weers Ferry Road. Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
We're gonna table this indefinitely as well.
All right.
Item 31, ordinance amending Chapter 27 of Code of Ordinances, Article 6, regulating dangerous pedestrian conduct in public rights of way.
All right, Mr. Samansky, Ms. Beard?
Uh, Mr. President, I think we kinda went over this in the work session, obviously trying to address some of the issues of pedestrian safety on our thoroughfares and public medians and roadways, and want to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what people can and can't do in those medians.
All right, explain it for me, uh, for the public, you know, we talked about it in the work session, but we didn't have this crowd.
Sure, sure. So we're proposing an ordinance to address some of the issues of pedestrian safety here in the city. We actually are one of the, have one of the highest rates of pedestrian and vehicle collisions in the state of Alabama, and what we were looking to do is try and remove, um, the opportunity for those types of events to happen, uh, by preventing people from going into our right-ofways medi, our medians and our major streets, uh, crossing roads, um, and this is something that, uh, would be aimed at all pedestrians. So I know in the past, there's been, uh, an effort to kinda target specific kinds, but, you know, I understand that there may be some activities, fundraising for Pee Wee Football, but we also don't need to have children running across our roads in our medians. Uh, and be used to buy the paper out of people in the middle of the roads in the medians, probably not, uh, something that we need to do going forward as well. So this takes care of the entirety of this pedestrian, pedestrian safety issue. Um, Counselor Beard and I have spoken with Chief Grayboys, we've spoken with representatives of the Sheriff's Department, we spoke with some representatives at MPS to make sure that they would communicate this, uh, to their coaches and other fundraising activities. And so I hope that this gives, uh, MPD or anybody in public safety the opportunity to engage with individuals and let them know that it's, that it's not safe for them to be crossing our major thoroughfares and then occupying our medians.
All right, anyone have a question?
Mr. President?
Ms. Mitch?
Can I get a legal opinion on this ordinance before we vote on it?
Ms. Bellinger?
It's been, um, vetted, we've done the legal research as far as federal lawsuits, and we haven't, we found that generally speaking, these have been held to be constitutional.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Ms. Riley?
So I just wanna get some clarification, so if you have a homeless person standing on the side of the street, and they stepped over and asked you for a dollar, this affects them as well for them to be fined, correct?
Well, so if there's somebody that's standing on a public, whether it's a sidewalk or the side of the street, no, no, the intent of this is inside those median spaces that are, um, in our major thoroughfares.
So if a homeless person is standing in the median area...
Mm-hmm.
And you're at the traffic light...
Yes.
And you pull up, and they ask you for a dollar, this affects them to have a fine against them, correct?
Well, the first, uh, the breakdown for engagement is, uh, requires a verbal warning for the individual before any kind of citation is issued. So we're gonna make sure that, um, that, uh, we are communicating to those, uh, individuals, uh, and that's what's spelled out under the, uh, Section 3, Part B.
Correct. And also...
Section 3, Part B of the ordinance.
Mr. President?
Ms. Beard?
Um, it just states in here too, under Section 1, about the public right-ofway, the roadway, the median, the pedestrian refuge, we are trying to make an attempt where people are impeding our lanes when we're traveling and riding on the streets that are in the way of a driver, and so therefore the pedestrians are in the road, and it presents a problem. And so, um, we're trying to make sure that we are not losing any more pedestrians in Montgomery, Alabama, and, um, you know, there are plenty other things that we could offer our unhoused population, and I believe that we have, um, agencies that do that as well. And so, um...
Mr. President, you have issue there?
Yes.
So, Mr. President?
Ms. Riley?
So we already have an ordinance on this, correct? So this is an ordinance to just enforce what the ordinance that we already have?
Ms. Tate?
Yeah, I mean, it amends the Chapter 27 of the code and provides more clarification on this.
I'm just afraid, Mr. President, that we're gonna get caught up in a situation, and I know you just said, uh, Ms. Bellinger, about the, the law, but I'm afraid we're gonna get caught up in a situation where it's gonna be a homeless incident that's gonna happen again, and we're gonna be back in federal court dealing with someone saying that this law affected a homeless person when we can't deal with panhandling. And, and it turns around, I, I, I'm, I'm reclaiming time, and we're asking, I'm asking the question about it, because I wanna make sure we're not gonna affect people who actually are not in the street, that's on the side, standing on the side, and someone calls and say, hey, they was in the street, 'cause they do that now, and the police cannot do anything, 'cause by the time they get out of the street, they're already out of the way. And I just wanna make sure we're, we're covering everything, because we're not really utilizing our homeless area for homelessness, and we've gotta look at all of it and not just a certain portion of it. So I'm just making sure that you're good with this, Stacy, on the law.
I can tell you the problem, uh, or what the courts have found to be unconstitutional about the panhandling laws, or the fact that they target specific groups of people, this was written to be more broad and, and be inclusive of anyone. So because of that, so far, the courts have held it to be constitutional. I have not, excuse me, identified any challenges in the 11th Circuit to this specific ordinance, um, but the other circuits have supported it thus far.
Thank you.
All right, any other question?
Mr. President, we, we fought this battle about three years ago, and we met with the Southern Poverty Law Center twice, and it was all about pedestrian safety, and they were fine with that. As long as we were doing something to keep the pedestrians straight, they were good with that. So I think we'll be fine with this.
Mr. President.
Ms. Beard.
Chief Grayboys, could you come speak to us about, um, how we're gonna patrol this, please, and, and what steps? You know, you, we discussed it. We've sent it to everybody, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, please.
So, I want to make sure I have clear, you're asking how we're gonna enforce it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, basically, what we will have to do is enforce it based on the letter of what you are writing. And of course, we have to talk to our city prosecutors to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as prosecuting it.
Okay, you got your answer, you get your answer, Ms. Beard?
I did, I just, my, my thing is, is that when the, the police are coming down the road-
Right.
Are we gonna, that, my question was, are you gonna instruct the police officers, we see the panhandlers-
Well, yes.
Are the pedestrians in the road, such as those that come in with their tickets on Saturday, and ask, and they're in the middle of the road, are we going to move them along their way?
Well, yeah, I mean, based on-
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I mean, when, when it gets put into effect, what we do is we ride down the road, we see them out there, we're going to encounter them.
That's what I, that's the thing.
Now, the thing about it is, the way the law is written, of course, we can ask them to move-
Correct.
It also gives some, some discretion as well, and you need, you know, which is literally, if the person's acting in a manner that's dangerous enough, we might have to take them into custody immediately.
Correct.
So that is something that's also written into that law.
Correct.
So that's why I'm stating, we'll, we'll enforce it as it is written. When, when police see something going wrong or a crime in front of them, we're gonna enforce the law and do what we need to do.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. President.
Ms. Mitch.
Just, just one question for Chief. So I want to make sure that we understand, so if they're not in the right-of-way, they're not in the street, they're just standing on, on the corner, um, that's nothing that we're, we're gonna be able to do unless we actually, the police officer actually have to see them impeding traffic. Let, let us understand so we can-
This doesn't work the same way as that, according to my reading of it, if, basically, what you're doing is you're creating prohibited zones.
Okay.
So therefore, by being in that zone, the person's in violation immediately.
So we, in, in other words, if they're just standing there, not acting, but if they're in that zone-
If they're, if they are in the prohibited zone, then they're gonna be in violation. If they're standing on a sidewalk or on the side of the road outside of that zone, they're fine.
And we could potentially take them to jail just if they're standing in that particular zone.
If it's in the particular zone, because the zone is gonna be designated directly based on pedestrian safety and how sa- unsafe that zone is. By virtue of its location, it's unsafe.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Semensky.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules.
All right, have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Eight, Mr. Mitchell, did you vote for that or not?
It'll be carried over for two weeks.
Eight with one abstention.
All right, this item will be carried over for two weeks.
Item thirty-two, resolution affirming the intent of the city to enter into an agreement with Jackson Healthcare and Jackson Investment Group as a part of a partnership with the county to ensure the continuity and viability of healthcare services to the citizens of Montgomery.
All right, um, I'd just like to make a statement before this, this resolution is to say that the city of Montgomery is willing to enter into a agreement. If all parties are participating, the county, the state, and everybody, the county and the state is not participating in this agreement, this is not on board. So this is the resolution that we're putting forth as a city, to say we're willing to partnership to save Jackson, but we need our other partners to participate also.
Mr. President.
Mr.-
Motion to suspend rules.
All right.
I have a question, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. President. Is there any way we can add those county Mr. Pruitt spoke about also into this to include?
I think we, we-
Or we just need to do us?
We're doing the one with the city and the county, and as we go forward in negotiation, I agree with Mr. Pruitt, with the county, that we were talking about a target county, Elmore County, and all this surrounding counties that use Jackson Hospital, because I agree, this is not a burden just for the citizen of Montgomery to, to, to bear that, you know, the county, um, and the city of Montgomery takes on a lot, and this is just not gonna be something that we go out front and everybody uses. It's kind of like, everybody want to eat at the barbecue, but no one want to bring their pig or their cow, and so that, that's what we're at now. We want to say that we're leading the fight, uh, with the other, uh, entities coming on board to, uh, support Jackson Hospital. I have a motion to suspend rules.
I have motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, Mr. General.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you. Justin, it's on you guys now. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your work this morning with the county commission, thank you.
Item thirty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute contracts without council approval.
All right.
Mr. President.
Mr. Semensky.
I'd like to reiterate what I said earlier, and I hope the council would, uh, consider this, that over the past year, with the contracts resolution that we passed last November, uh, all the contracts, I think pretty much everyone except for one that got hung up briefly, made it through this council. We've created a system, we've ju- we were talking about contracts at the end of the work session that we were all seeing in this meeting. And so, when I offered up the, to continue the resolution to have that number capped, what I thought, based on the landscape of the state of Alabama, looking at other municipalities, talking with the clerk's office, was a reasonable number. And so I'd like the council to reconsider that as we go forward.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Semensky.
Uh, Ms. Mitch. Mr. President, I, I do ask that we carry this over so we can actually have the number. I think we don't have a number, I guess everybody is anticipating a number. If we can just please carry this over so we can actually have the number on this, this resolution, I greatly appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so we're not gonna have a suspension on the rules on this item, we're gonna carry it over. I do want to make this statement, uh, before this council and before this community. Uh, I know this the council for, the judiciary to look at all contracts, and we have that to do in the city of Montgomery. Any contract can be reviewed in the city of Montgomery by this council. The mayor of this city is the executive CEO of the city that has operated, it's no mayor in the city of Montgomery ever had this, uh, resolution or ordinance. When we stopped the fifty thousand dollar contract cap, uh, two weeks ago, the clerk said that we needed to put a, 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 a number on it, or it could be unrestricted. Every mayor in the city of Montgomery has had unrestricted contract renewal and, and signing that comes before the council. If we have any question on any contract in the city of Montgomery, you can ask, you can see the contract, and it comes before this council. So I just want to make that statement as we negotiate to come up with a number. I think fifty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars is too low. So as we negotiate going forward on contract, I want this council to be mindful of the things that we're doing in this city now, and as we go forward, as the mayor said in his, uh, communication. And I'm not just saying this out there, we're in the best financial condition that we ever been in as a city. So we want to put these restraints on this mayor, but we didn't put no restraints on any other mayor in the city of Montgomery, and that's my statement.
Mr. President.
Ms. Mitch.
I would like to ask, um, Councilman Pruitt and Councilman Genright, is that true, y'all was here when, with readministration? So was there any- No, no, stay, stay, stay on topic, stay, stay, stay on topic, I'm, I, I asked a question. Stay on topic.
Trust me, we're gonna move on, it's not gonna- The rules are not gonna be suspended, but we're gonna move on. All right, next item.
Item thirty-four, resolution extending to the vacation of a portion of Orange Street between Randolph and Columbus Streets.
All right, item thirty-four, um, Ms. Johnson.
Uh, motion to suspend rules.
All right, have a motion to suspend rules on the vacation-
Yeah.
Of the street, motion to suspend rules. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, hold on, hold on a sec, let back up. I have someone to speak on item thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Ms. Esther. Even though it's being carried over, you can come on to him.
Good evening, my name is Angela Expert, I'm with South Johnson and also South Alliance. I have a couple of terms that I want all of our elected officials to understand. Accountability, accountability, all nine districts, you are in those chairs because the, your constituents hold you accountable for taking care of your districts and safeguarding our city when it comes down to our funds coming into the city. Checking balances, without checking balances, where do we end up? We end up in, in a whole lot of mess. In reference to allowing a, one person to oversee and sign off on these contracts, I understand your contracts may take a little time to get approved and get it, push it over the finish line. But all nine of you are responsible for your districts and to ensure that our city is moving forward in unity with all of you. Not one person. All nine of you need to step back, look at it, talk with your constituents before you make a decision on item number thirty-three. Oversight, without oversight, we can go down a real dark road real quick. We've got to make sure that our city is working in a unified manner, all nine districts have some oversight, you have checking balances, you want to know where that money is going, you want to know what's going on with those contracts. You don't want it to just be a contract signed off and then, oh, here you go, we got a new contract. You should be in the loop from the beginning and vote on these things. Your constituents requires that of you because we voted to put all of you in those seats, and we respect each and every one of you. I respect all of you, you all have your own opinion, but I want you to think about it. Oversight, everyone needs oversight and checking balances, that's just the nature of the beast that we've seen in the businesses as long as we have been old enough to understand the system. So we've got to have some oversight, we need to set boundaries, we need to have a set number, we don't need to have just a free rein that you can sign off on contracts. Mr. Calhoun, I appreciate you, Mr. President, and all, all the rest of the district representatives, but go back to your constituents and give some feedback before you, thank you.
We have a motion to-
We don't, no, sir, motion has not been made on number thirty-four.
We on number thirty-three.
You can't, thirty-four now. Thirty-four, I read thirty-four, but we don't have a motion.
Okay, need a motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hands.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Thirty-five, resolution authorizing the city to join the city of Tuscaloosa in litigation against the Alabama Department of Revenue regarding the simplified seller's use tax.
Yeah, motion to, how, most to suspend rules?
Most to suspend rules.
Have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
He cut me out.
Unanimous.
All right, need a motion.
Mo- motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item thirty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor to make application to Delta Regional Authority for a grant for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for funding the Fairview Collective.
Motion to suspend rules?
Uh, have a motion to suspend rules, and just for the audience, this is for the farmers market on Fairview.
Right.
Uh, have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Thirty-seven, application for an event center doing business is Venue Nineteen Event Space, Nineteen South Port Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, I'm gonna ask to carry this over as I do for the investigation.
All right, item thirty-seven, be carried over.
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, Cornelius Burton or Charlie Burton?
Yeah.
They, they signed up to talk on that item, so are you in the audience? Cornelius Burton, Charlie Burton, item thirty-seven? Man, somebody named Cornelius don't show up, that's not like. All right, that item be carried over.
All right.
Item number thirty-eight, application for a conference center doing business is Summerlin's Place, three fifteen West Fleming Road.
All right.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
That'll be carried over, I spoke with them.
You want to hear from him first?
Well, I spoke with him, and he's, uh, not here.
Big on?
Yeah, he said he was leaving, because he's gonna have a meeting with me so we can discuss this.
This item will be carried over.
Yes.
No side ideas, he's gonna talk to my community and make sure he's correct with the community-
All right.
Before we do anything, Mr. Fox.
All right.
Item thirty-nine, resolution reappointing Jeff Jones to Parks and Recreation Board.
All right, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask, suspend rules?
Have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Forty, resolution appointing Angela Calvin to the housing authority.
Got a good motion to suspend-
Motion to suspend rules.
Have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item forty-one, resolution appointing Brittany Lee to the Architectural Review Board.
Motion to suspend rules.
Have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Forty-two, resolution appointing Kayla Dixon to the planning commission.
Motion to suspend rules.
Have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item forty-three, resolution concurring in the reappointment of Carrie L. Owens, Jr. to the Joint Public Charity Hospital Board.
Need a motion?
Most to suspend rules.
No, not for the rest of the agenda, no.
They can't do rest of the agenda yet.
No.
Do forty-four.
All right, have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
He took my job.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Forty-four, resolution concurring in the reappointment of Henry A. Frazier to the Joint Public Charity House, Hospital Board.
Most to suspend rules.
Have a motion to suspend rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Forty-five, appeal of proposed demolition of six thirteen through six nineteen Watts Avenue by David Herman.
All right, we have the appeal of demolition six thirteen through six nineteen, uh, appealed by Mr. David Herman.
I'm David Herman, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me come present my case. I've sent each of you a letter stating the reasons this building should not be demolished. This would be item number forty-eight also goes over there, so I'm not gonna rehash that, but thanks for your opportunity to appeal this.
All right, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. President, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Herman, thank you so much for coming, we did receive your letter. Uh, I just want to speak on behalf of the residents and constituents of District Three, specifically those that live in the Centennial Hill area and around the ASU area. For too long, that area has been overrun with dilapidated properties, abandoned properties, and I know for a fact that for about thirty years, this has sat and not been rectified. Uh, if there is any member from the Centennial Hill community, business or resident, please stand. It's some over here, and then there are many that called, and, and we got one that stood in the back that are in support of cleaning up their community. I came in office and my job was to ensure that the area I grew up in, I was raised in, South Jackson Baptist Church, uh, and it was once a beautiful area, a thriving area, but no longer. And so I want to ensure that the community understands how important it is that we invest in our neighborhood, that starts with demolishing those dilapidated properties. Because what I found, every time I ride through that area, we have people that have taken up residence and made trap houses. And if you don't know what a trap house is, they're selling drugs out of those properties that have been abandoned and dilapidated, and I want to stand for it in District Three. And so Inspection Department, uh, Mr. Robert Morgan and Marcus Dean, if you don't mind coming up, uh, they have a presentation, uh, to show exactly what that looks like and how it has negatively impacted the community and those residents that live in that area.
Can I respond, or should I do it later, after they speak?
Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead, speak.
Yeah, Dave, go ahead and speak, Dave.
Uh, the-
See, see.
The, the neighboring business couldn't be here, but he was going to comment as well, that there's not been any crime on that building, these are concrete block buildings, they're not falling down.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm looking for another, I, I sold them, and I find, it was all in the letter, and I financed them for somebody who put new roofs on and he put all- and I financed them for somebody who put new roofs on and he put all the rotten fascia, and he ran out of money.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with there is no crime in that particular building, but it has been faceless for years. And when we say we want to clean it up, that starts with the look off of High Street. That is directly off of High Street. And I know you tried to sell it, and it didn't work out, and that's very unfortunate, but right now we are building, and we're growing, and we have plans, and we are ready to invest in Centennial Hill. And we had already started three years ago, and now we're ready to move. And so...
We have other prospective buyers right now, but they're just on hold.
They'll have a vacant lot, ready to go.
Thank you. And my attorney is here too, Susan Copeland. If you have any questions for her.
No questions. Thank you so much.
Sure. On August 13th, Mr. David did receive a notice for our intent to demolish 613 Watts, and that was due to Section 13, excuse me, Section 1153B that gives us authorization as municipality to demolish those properties that have been deemed a nuisance. So we didn't, Mr. David, it wasn't based on the structural integrity of the building. It was based on it being a longstanding nuisance. And we do have some pictures that kind of documents that on August 18th, Mr. David was contacted, one of our inspectors, Mr. Woodall, and he was really encroached about his options to stop the demolition. And we, at the time, didn't inform him that they had the opportunity to repair. He chose not to. He said he would be here to appeal, and he would bring his lawyer. Ultimately, if you look at the pictures, there's been 31 cases of nuisance at this location from 2009 to 2025. That's a total of 16 years. And I think, for the most part, our issue is really the longstanding nature of the blight and the state of dilapidation for our intent of providing Mr. David the letter. And thus, you can see, there's been minimal efforts since 2009 to 2025 to address some of the similarities that you see from year to year from a state of blight.
All right. Anyone have any questions, or Mr. Dean or Mr. Herman?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
All right. Ms. Johnson, what's your... What's your pleasure?
I'd like to move forward with the demolition, Mr. President.
All right.
Okay, you need to make a motion to deny the appeal.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny the appeal. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right.
Thank you, Council.
Item 46, appeal of assessment cost of abatement of nuisances by Amos B. Sunday, 101 Day District.
Mr. Sunday, Amos B. Sunday? Item 46, Amos Sunday? You coming to talk? You holding tight? Okay. All right, need a motion to deny the appeal?
Motion to deny.
All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, next item.
Item 47, appeal of notice of abatement of nuisances at 220 Marshall Street by Oscar Boykin.
Oscar Boykin?
Yes, sir.
Your name for the record?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, councilmen and councilwomen. I spoke with the inspector, and we came up with an agreement.
Excuse me, I'm Mr. Boykin. Give your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry.
Your name for the record before you get started.
I'm Oscar Boykin.
All right.
Yes, sir. Inspector and I, we came up with an agreement. The agreement is supposed to be completed by Friday, so right now I don't have anything further because of the fact I think it would be good if we both tried on our agreement. So unless Friday rolls around, something different come up, you know, I'm really done with this.
All right. Y'all worked out something that you're gonna get worked out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Didn't need to take action on it?
Are you gonna withdraw your appeal?
Mr. Boykin, you withdrawing your appeal?
I'm...
Come up, fool. We can have it on the record, sir. Anyone from housing code want to speak on this item, please go forth.
You tired?
No, no, no. I'm just shy to talk. Very shy person.
I can't say a letter.
Yeah, we came up with an agreement, so I just don't feel the need to, unless Friday rolls around, something different. So I'm really done.
No, Council, we did come up with agreement, and we agreed that Friday would be his day for the abatement.
Okay, so you withdrawing your appeal?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Item 48, pursuant to Section 1153B1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed locations.
All right, need a motion to suspend the rules?
Suspend the rules on the rest of the agenda?
Just, no, this one you just uphold.
Okay.
This one you just uphold. You don't have to suspend the rules.
All right.
Most uphold.
Have a motion to uphold. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item 49, pursuant to Section 1153B1 Code of Alabama, resolution assessing the cost of abatement of unsafe structures at various locations.
Suspend motion on...
To suspend the rules?
Been waiting on that all night. I have a motion to suspend the rules for the... Yes, sir.
One of those properties is assessing me on a property I haven't owned in 14 years. It's 2935 Althea. I have not owned that property in 14 years, but it's trying to assess me with the cost of damage.
What property are you referring to?
2935 Althea.
Oh, so you're on item number 49?
Yes.
Someone from housing. Do we have an address that he's talking about on this resolution?
I have the tax notices and everything. I don't know. I haven't owned that property in 14 years.
So he's saying he had owned it, but it's still a problem.
He's trying to assess me with the demolition. I have not owned that property in 14 years.
Hey, you can just step to the side and just work that out. All right, need a motion?
Motion up.
We gotta have a vote on suspension of rules.
All right, have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item 50, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lights.
Motion to suspend rules?
Just need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor?
No, we gotta have a suspension of rules on this one.
He suspended the rules for the remainder of the agenda?
She didn't take it.
You didn't take it. So you want to be here another hour?
Just keep...
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Mr. President, I've got another resolution I'd like to pass.
All right, Mr. Jenright, you gave it to the clerk.
Resolution, reappointing James Arceal to the Personnel Board.
All right.
Have a motion to suspend the rules, please?
Have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
All right, any other resolutions on the table?
I'd like to make a motion from the floor.
Okay, Mr. Jenright?
Yeah, we suspend the Entertainment District until we have a better opportunity to get it under control.
He stole my thought.
Apparently, very bad for business in Montgomery, and we need to make sure we take care of the businesses in Montgomery. So I'd like to make a motion that we suspend this until further notice.
All right. All right. You hear the motion?
Mr. President, before we jump in on that...
Hold on, hold on. I heard Mr. Big, then Mr. Semask. Six, seven. Mr. President, can we get a little more detail, Mr. Jenright, when you say suspend? Can we get detail of what you mean when we're suspending?
I mean, it's not enforced until we have further details about it. It just takes that in. It's totally not enforceable, not used until later.
Can I clarify for Mr. President?
Hold on, hold on. Again, Mr. Semask, then we'll come back to you. District 3, go ahead.
Mr. President, I think what I wanted to clarify is that I assume you're suspending the downtown Entertainment District, because there are multiple in this city. You're suspending the downtown Entertainment District.
I'll accept that.
Ms. Johnson?
That's it. That's what I just want to make, Mitch, is the downtown Entertainment District.
Okay. All right. You need any action on that? You need to vote?
Yes, sir, we need a vote on that.
So we're suspending the downtown Entertainment District right now?
Until further notice.
Indefinitely, until further notice. Okay?
Not indefinitely.
Motion to rules?
Indefinitely.
Yeah. We have to bring it back.
It's just gonna be a motion to adopt, because you don't have a resolution in front of it. Just a motion to adopt.
Okay, all right. Motion to adopt.
All right, we have a motion. You got a question?
Yes. Legal, is we good? Can you make sure that we're clarifying it, what they just said? Only the downtown district is what they are putting on the table to suspend.
You just clarified.
It has been done before. Mayor Strange had the authority to shut down. The Americans shut down the Entertainment District. They did it once before under Mayor Strange's authority, and then opened it back up once some problems were resolved.
All right.
Okay.
The ordinance speaks directly to that.
Yeah, motion? Motion to adopt?
All right, have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, so you want to explain what's happening now, that it's been... Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Page. You're gonna be dismissed for that or shot out like that. This is a public meeting, and we do it decently and in order. Go ahead.
Okay, so what just happened was, we suspended the Entertainment District, meaning there will be no open carry alcohol movement around the downtown area. So the downtown district, there is a map on the city of Montgomery's website that you can go and look at, but that is what we just did. It is suspending all of that action until further notice.
And enforcing the law to rule.
I'm sorry?
And enforcing the law.
And we're enforcing no law to rule downtown.
All right. Thank you. All right.
All right. No, we have all the contracts.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you.
Okay.
All right.
The very first one is resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract or letter of agreement with Progress Rail Services for railroad repairs at Kershaw Burbank and Kershaw Dunbarton.
Mr. President?
Ms. Beard?
Yes, I'm motion to suspend the rules.
All right, have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Eight.
All right, item be carried over. Next item?
Mr. Preston?
Ms. Beard?
This is for the safety of the neighborhood. It's not, we're not trying to plot one neighborhood against, one district against another, and it's ready to go. We're ready to execute this. And we've been working on this for two years.
The rules didn't get suspended. The rules didn't get suspended, so we can't vote on it. So it'll be carried over two weeks. All right, next item?
Resolution approving and authorizing mayor to execute contract with Duvo's Construction Company for $394,399.50 for grading and construction of Millard Fuller Drive Extension.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
Have a motion to adopt. Please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution approving and authorizing mayor to execute contract for Block Group, McConnell Jones, and Cook's Pest Control.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand. You singing it, man.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. And a resolution approving and authorizing mayor to execute contracts with Express Scripps, Hamwinds, Gallagher, Assured Partners, Big Cross Blue Shield of Alabama.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Counsel, I do have contingencies. For District 2, $250 to counsel on substance abuse, $2,000 to Deerfield Neighborhood Association, $1,000 to North Pass Association. For District 3, Irwin Neighborhood Association, $1,700.
All right, anyone else?
Miss Layla, I sent you my stuff as well. Let me do 1,500 for the Lacy Board through...
Lacy Board and New Year's Parade.
Yes. I'm gonna do 6,000 to Young Men on a Mission, 2,000 to...
Wait, 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 wait. I can't write that fast.
Speed it, man.
2,000 on...
6,000 to Young Men on a Mission.
I got that one.
2,000 to Brew Tech Cheerleaders.
Brew Tech Cheerleaders. Okay.
1,000 to Boss.
Okay.
I think that's it for me, Miss Layla.
Okay.
Hey, Miss Layla, I'm gonna do 1,500 to the Lacy Board, New Year's Day Parade. All right, anyone else?
Yes, Ms. Layla, can we do 1,000 for SOS, please?
SOS?
Mm-hmm. Save Our Streets.
Pardon?
Save Our Streets.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Anyone else? All right, need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Ms. Johnson?
Sorry.
Unanimous.
All right. Any council member have anything else before we get into our public communication?
Just one quick question. I know we got the reward money for tips to 50. Y'all will let us know if we need help with more in the future.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll let you go. Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, in our public communication...